Good evening. This is the October twenty nine twenty twenty five meeting of the Newcastle's only Board of Appeals. And Mr. Secretary, we have an extension.
Uh we have an extension box capital.
Is there anyone here from box capital?
That would be me.
Can you hear us?
Can you read it?
Yep. Can you like give us your name for the uh record please?
Absolutely, uh Douglas de Boer.
Absolutely.
Douglas de Boer.
Okay.
And it's my private residence, yeah.
And it's my private residence.
Okay, what I'm you're looking for an extension.
Yeah.
Yeah.
From a previously granted variance.
Correct, and uh I can give you the 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 reason, but you I'll like continue.
Correct.
I can give you the 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 reason, but you I'll like continue.
Continue.
No, for the record, we need to hear the reason. Please go right ahead.
Yep. Um yeah, over the last year, I've been working to get final approval.
Yeah, over the last year. Working to get final approval.
Um you know, I I long story short, um I I finally got the town planning board resolution last week on Tuesday.
Long story short, um I I finally got the town planning board resolution last week on Tuesday.
Um I there's a number I I got the county septic um this summer.
There's a number I I got the the county septic um this summer.
But obviously, the 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 full uh uh nothing was able to be started until I got the the town uh resolution last Tuesday.
Obviously, the 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 full uh uh nothing was able to be started until I got the the town uh resolution last Tuesday.
They actually gave me um eighteen months to give my to to give my uh eighteen months from last Tuesday to give my building permit.
To give my building permit.
Um according to their resolution, so that that is a that I can go into more details, but that's the 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 core of it.
So that that was a that I can go into more details, but that's the 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 core of it. I couldn't do any work until I got that resolution. I couldn't do any work until I got that resolution.
The plan the planning board has given you eighteen months?
They have. They have.
Okay.
I put in.
I I'm looking at your application here, it looks like you want a year from us.
Yeah, uh um that would be re- um a month ago when when we were looking for the extension, we were just looking to ex- um extend the same amount they gave you before.
That would be re- uh the um a a month ago when when. Um extended the same amount they gave you before.
Um it's new information from last week that the planning board um gave eighteen months.
It's new information from last week that the planning board um gave eighteen months.
So as as part of this media, I don't know um if it's okay to do that, but it might make sense to have both the town bodies to have co-condue time coming.
As as part of the media, I don't know.
Okay.
If it's okay to do that, it might make sense to have both the town bodies to have co-condue time coming.
Not necessarily, not necessarily. I'm wondering why you need a year, are you that you're that far away from completing all your paperwork?
Yeah, yeah, I I've been working on this for few years.
Yeah.
Um I I I almost gave up.
I I I almost gave up.
And so fa- fa- finally able to get it.
And so fa- fa- finally able to get it.
Never give up.
Um it it it's the it's the winter and you know and it's you know gonna be harder to to move things up and so yeah, for sure, at least it is, you know.
It it it's it's a winter and you know and it's you know gonna be harder to to move things up and so yeah, for sure, at least it is, you know.
Um I would hope that we give it at least a year.
I would hope that we give it at least a year.
Yeah, I know, 'cause our normal our normal procedure is six months, but um he's the building inspector. What do you think about the paperwork? Shit, is there any way to expedite it or?
We do not have the building permit information.
You don't have it yet.
Yeah, I I I still I I still have other things that I need to prepare, you know, fin- finally, I mean, I just got my site plan approved, I still have the the overall building architecture, all that stuff that that I need to work on.
Okay.
Things that to prepare, you know, fin- finally. Approve, I still have the the overall building architecture, all that stuff that that I need to work on.
I get it. I get it, okay. Yeah, I'm 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 okay with a year, I don't know about the rest of my colleagues.
Fine with me.
So I'll make a I'm gonna make a motion that we grant your extension for one year.
Okay.
I said no.
Chairman Giordina.
Hi.
Mike Nolan.
Aye.
Ron Genzeg.
Aye.
Moran Gottlieb.
Aye.
Kathleen Darazans.
Aye.
You have your one year, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Have a minute.
Have a minute. Uh the next is Anand of Two Andale Drive.
Hi, good evening, I'm here.
Okay. Can you state your name for the record, please, and tell us what are these that you seek?
Yes, good evening, my name is Kenneth Anand from Two Andale Drive, Lawrence Farms East. I'm seeking a variance on uh fence. It was installed along the uh road frontage along Route seventeen, one seventeen. Um requesting a variance uh while it's in. Just wait a few.
Oh, I'm sorry, I I missed that last, can you repeat the last comment?
Yeah, just requesting a variance on the fence that is lined along the uh edge of Route one seventeen on the bulkhead of our house, per the deal of Anandale Drive.
Yeah, just requesting a variance on the fence that is lined along the uh edge of Route one seventeen on the bulkhead of our house, per the deal of Anandale Drive.
And the variance is for is facing the wrong way, I was I'm a liar.
Correct, correct.
Correct, correct.
Are you are you aware of the uh correspondence that we got from the beautification advisory board?
I am now, yes, I received it yesterday.
I am now, yes, I received it yesterday.
Oh, you are, okay, do you have any comment on it?
Yeah, I can understand uh the woman's position, um however, the reasons that I gave in my variance application was number one.
Yeah, I mean, I can understand uh the woman's position, um however, the reasons that I gave in my variance application was number one. Uh the fence was grandfathered in, we only uh repaired portions of the fence and kept it consistent with the majority of the fence, which was already facing a cer- similar direction.
Grandfathered in. And kept it consistent with the majority of the fence, which was already facing a cer- similar direction.
Would have been extremely expensive to change all that at the time. And uh the portions that we repaired were damaged by trees that had fallen due to um heavy rainfall and 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 uh things that have happened due to um you know, a lot of uh um flooding and uh saturation on that back end of the property.
You know.
Um the second part is that there's neighborhood consistency, the fence adjacent to mine, um I believe it's a uh six Andale Drive or eight, I can't remember the number.
The second part is that there's neighborhood consistency, the fence adjacent to mine, um I believe it's a uh six Andale Drive or eight, I can't remember the number.
Um which was likely installed by the same fencing company, is oriented in the same direction.
Which was likely installed by the same fencing company is oriented in the same direction.
And so um granting this variance would preserve continuity along the streetscape.
Granting this variance would preserve continuity along the streetscape.
There's really minimal visual impact when uh the green and flowers are in full bloom, you're getting the view of a very small portion of the fence from the road.
There's really minimal visual impact.
And uh there's a practical hardship in flipping it.
It's a practical hardship in flipping it.
They already cost you six thousand dollars to repair the fence and we call in additional three just to flip that portion of the fence around.
They already cost you six thousand dollars to repair the fence and we call in additional three just to flip that portion of the fence around.
So that's why I'm seeking your variance to see.
So that's why I'm seeking your variance to see.
Okay. Um thank you. Any comments from the board?
No.
No comments. I'm gonna make a comment from the from the from the board here that uh I took a ride by to just to further my myself with what you're looking for. And um quite frankly, I don't see much wrong with it. I do see that one bare spot, about twenty feet long, that doesn't have much greenery in front of it, but the rest of it is well hidden from the road. Uh in your application, you was offered to put some screening there. Um if that still stands, um and you can screen that a little bit better than it is now, um I would be inclined to approve it.
Yeah, I'll I'll be happy to, I just uh I don't know what will continue to live in that area.
Yeah, I'll I'll be happy to, I just uh I don't know what will continue to live in that area.
It's a very um unique area, there's a lot of uh saturation back there that run off from one seventeen.
Saturation back there.
And so I just might ask for some help from the Newcastle um Parks Department or whoever helped uh plant the uh the trees at my culvert on one seventeen and colony.
Plant the uh the trees at my culvert on one seventeen and colony.
They did such a great job there. So I just might ask for some recommendations on what to plant that would grow um and cover that area well.
Okay, nor- normally, we we ask for planting plans, specific uh species of plants in in such situations, uh uh other other situations, not your particular situation. Um in this case, I would I don't think I would wanna do that. Uh I think that if you would agree to consult with, like you said, the uh the town officials who are familiar with that or even our building department. And find something that's uh acceptable and amenable to all concerned, um I would I would consider granting of the motion, I if you are okay with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes that makes perfect sense and uh just that I would have a reasonable amount of time to plant it. You obviously wouldn't wanna plant it now with the winter coming, so just that I could take care of it in the spring perhaps.
Just that I could take care of it in the spring perhaps.
No, you're right, I I mean, I like I say, I I would I would say that if you are if you coordinate with the officials in town who are uh in control of that and follow your lead. Whether that whether they recommend now or in the spring shouldn't be a problem, uh for for me anyway, I don't know about my colleagues, but uh. Anybody, any comment on that?
I would just say, I I live in Lawrence Farms East as well, and um you 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 don't even know there's a fence there, there's so much uh rush, it just.
Yeah, just that one.
I I think it it's an it's a non-issue, I would agree with our chairman.
Anybody in the uh audience would like to comment on this application or anybody online would like to comment on this application?
No hands are raised.
No hands are raised, okay, I'm gonna move reclose public hearing.
Second motion.
Chairman Giordina.
Hi.
Mike Nolan.
Aye.
Ron Genzeg.
Aye.
Moran Gottlieb.
Aye.
Kathleen Darazans.
Aye.
Okay, let's go through the motion. Me?
Yeah, I don't have the I don't have the file.
Okay, no problem.
I don't know, or maybe it was last week's file, it was last week, I couldn't find it.
Okay, I'm going to uh I'm gonna make a motion that the application, the Anandale, Anand application at Two Andale Drive for uh the approval of a fence that has been installed. Um with the um unfinished side facing away from the property and toward the public. The application to have that approved and granted a variance for it be approved for the following reasons. Uh the granting of the app- of the approval will not affect or negatively have any uh effect on the character of the neighborhood. There are other fences there that are similarly sit- situated. This particular fence uh faces onto Route one seventeen, it doesn't face uh anybody else's property. There is a large portion of the fencing that is, if not completely uh obscured by shrubbery, almost completely obscured by shrubbery, except for one short stretch about twenty feet long. The uh applicant has agreed to to put some plantings on the bare spot to help to hide fence. Uh and the applicant has agreed to uh coordinate with the town departments that are um in control of that of of planting, whether it be the building department or the parks department. Uh and has agreed to follow their lead as to what should be planted there. There have been no neighbors in opposition to this application. And providing the applicant follow through on the uh planting, uh I would move that we grant the variance.
I second the motion.
Chairman Giordina.
Hi.
Mike Nolan.
Aye.
Ron Genzeg.
Aye.
Moran Gottlieb.
Aye.
Kathleen Darazans.
Aye.
Okay, have your various with the caveats, good luck.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
You too.
Uh Gobius.
Yeah, hello. Jackie, uh I hope it's okay and you joined for the call, I know we had an issue with uh with not making out the uh notices to the neighbors. But I figured I'd just join anyway.
Okay, uh Mr. Mr. Gobius, Mr. Gobius? Yes.
Yeah.
Uh we have we have been apprised this evening that there is a deficiency in the uh notifications for your application. Ligally, we cannot proceed with this case until that deficiency is corrected. Uh so we are going to postpone this matter until the November meeting, at which time we hope you will have all your ducks in a row and the notices sent uh properly. And we will go on from there.
It's not possible to just finish the meeting and do this later?
No, no, we can not we cannot move forward uh without the proper documentation and the and the proper procedures.
Do the meeting.
It's common for everybody and we will we cannot make any exceptions, I'm sorry to tell you that. So we will see you next month. Uh if you have any questions about how to to uh correct the uh the notifications and get them out properly in a correct amount of time. I'm sure our secretary will be more than happy to help you.
Can you give me an indication of this is going to be approved or not?
There's no indication about that until it's presented to us and the board has a chance to digest the presentation. And I will not, I cannot speak for my colleagues on the board. They would they make their own decisions and the ball will go how it goes. So we will see you next month, thank you very much.
I know, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, uh Babcock, Babcock on fifteen bucks.
Sure. Uh it's uh just seeking a side variance on the southern side of the property for a something ninety two square foot shed. Um it is going to be placed in a way that is both minimally obtrusive, close to the garage. And uh provide minimal to no, shouldn't impact any neighbors whatsoever. Give him this spot behind the hamlock tree. Can I answer any questions? That's pretty straightforward. Yeah, there was the the only concern from the neighbor was that they thought I was gonna put it on the top of the hill, which would have been visible from their kitchen, but that's not where I'm putting it. And upon explanation, they were fine with that. Apologies for the red lines, I couldn't get the surveyor to make the changes. So, normally in the system, so I use a little.
Is this shed in place now or?
No, it is not, it is what I'm looking to install. Since it's within the setup, I mean, it's a little plus, you know.
So the first question that we're gonna ask you is why can you not move that shed?
So alongside.
To to be within the setbacks, give us a good reason for that.
So alongside, I don't wanna have it alongside the house, um for obvious vermin and other reasons. The other thing is because I do have a deck alongside the back as well as several Tesla power walls that need to be, that I would not want to put a shed next to.
Okay.
I'm sorry, work on walls?
Tesla power wall batteries for the solar panel system that's in place.
Oh, 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 oh. Awesome.
Definitely don't wanna create a fire hazard.
It looks to me on the uh contour plan that you have uphill grade behind your house.
Yes, that is landscaped.
There's there's no plating area there you can put it in.
No, and it would be impractical because it's almost a twenty percent grade.
I see that, yeah.
So bringing a snow blower up, that would not be fun.
Okay, um comments from the board?
Uh how close is the house next to this shed?
It is, I would say at least so it is over here.
Okay.
So it's definitely probably is over.
Being close to the Fox and Road.
So, just for the rest of you, so we give you a kind of a point here.
Who else? What? Any anybody in the audience like to comment on this application? No, anybody online?
No hands are raised.
No hands are raised, I'll move, we close the public hearing.
I second the motion.
Chairman Giordina.
Hi.
Mike Nolan.
Hi.
Ron Genzeg.
Hi.
Warren Gottlieb.
Hi.
Kathleen Derazans.
Hi.
Thank you all.
Uh.
Well, I'm done here, I don't know.
Uh I'd like to make a motion um in regards to Charles and Christopher Babcock at uh fif- fifteen Fox and Road by Cisco um that we grant the variance um for a one hundred ninety-two square foot shed which is going to be one to two feet from the property line on the south side of the driveway. Um the variance um will be thirty-four feet, which is substantial hearings. Uh but according to the topography of the property as well as um the location of uh Tesla power walls, which I will Google when I get out of this meeting tonight. Um uh as well as not wanting to have the shed uh next to his house. Um the the Tesla power walls would create a potential fire situation. I just don't want the shed next to the house because of potential vermin situation. And the uh rear yard has a very steep contour, twenty percent grade. Um the granting of this variance will not create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood uh or detriment to nearby properties. Um the benefits sought by the applicants um could potentially be achieved by other feasible methods, but um this is the the best situation for the homeowner, which would be something that's important to us to consider. Uh the requested variance is substantial and that is thirty-four feet. Uh it will not have an adverse effect um on the physical or or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. Um the applicant has said that uh his neighbors are have asked a question on it and they're uh pleased with the result. Uh this is a self-created hardship. Again, um the benefit will outweigh the negative aspect of that. Uh and then I suppose we'll need six months to start, year to finish, do we need any kind of a survey?
Final survey, please.
A final survey, six months to go before we can finish.
I'll se- I'll second that.
Chairman Giordina.
Hi.
Mike Nolan.
Hi.
Ron Genzeg.
Hi.
Warren Gottlieb.
Hi.
Kathleen Derazans.
Hi.
We have your various, good luck.
Uh okay, Kim?
Good evening, Chairman, and members of the board. Um my name is Nora Hillner with Building Permit Services. I'm here representing Dr. Kim um in his request for variances. Um requesting three separate variances, uh one is for a stone patio, that's a hundred and forty-four square feet. Uh the required front yard setback is forty feet, um the proposed is thirty, so the requested variance is ten feet. A slate patio that is five hundred and twenty-eight square feet. The required setback is forty, proposed is twenty-eight, requested variance is twelve. And a seventy square foot shed that the rear yard setback is thirty-five feet, proposed is twenty-five feet, requested variance is ten feet. And a little background on this, uh these are are all existing, so um Dr. Kim purchased the property approximately twenty seventeen. At that time, uh the slate patio and the stone patio were there, they were there exactly as they are now. And uh Dr. Kim was not aware that these patios ha- had been installed uh without the proper permitting in place, so of course it was not known that they were also in the setbacks. And uh that's what I'm here for, to try and rectify that situation. And all the owner did place the shed, uh the seventy-foot shed on the driveway, it's where it is. But it's the most logical place for the shed, it's it's level there, it's on the driveway, none of the neighbors can see it. So it it's a logical place for it. And um I just wanna mention too that the patios have existed as they are for over nine years. Um pro- and but probably even longer. Uh these patios, they didn't change the neighborhood, they didn't well, you know, and just do anything to the neighborhood and uh to my knowledge, nobody has ever complained about the the patios. They're not an eyesore, um if the gra- if the variances are not granted, it would definitely be a financial burden. They're they're nice patios and I don't think, you know, you want them to be ripped up, so I respectfully request the uh variances.
Anybody?
Uh I don't think I have any questions, um is is the shed, you say it's on the driveway?
It is, it's on the driveway.
Does it have any kind of a foundation or is it just on top of the driveway?
No, no, it's just, it's just like a little plastic seventy-square-foot shed, it's pla- it's plastic, yeah.
Plastic.
Good, Ron? Any questions, Kathleen? Anybody in the audience want to interest this application? Anybody online want to like to interest the application?
No hands are raised.
No hands are raised. I'll move, we close the public hearing.
I second the motion.
Chairman Giordina.
Hi.
Mike Nolan.
Hi.
Ron Genzeg.
Hi.
Warren Gottlieb.
Hi.
Kathleen Derazans.
Hi.
All right, I make a motion uh that we grant um three variances. Uh to uh the sun came located at four forty-eights on the river road. Um the variances are a stone patio, um requested front yard setback, front yard variance of ten feet. Um and then a slate patio um is a front yard setback requiring a variance of twelve feet. Uh and then a shed which is located on the driveway, uh requiring a rear yard setback of ten feet. Um the slate and stone patios have been in place for at least nine years according to the homeowner's knowledge when he purchased the property in two thousand seventeen. Um the um shed is placed on the driveway because that is the most level uh location for the shed to be placed, is the plastic shed, um which is seventy square feet, which is pretty de minimis, um and it cannot be seen from the road. Uh the granting of this variance will not create and let me just say also that the if there were uh requirement to take uh the slate and sun patios up, it would be a significant financial burden. Uh the granting of this variance will not create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties. Uh the benefits sought by the applicants um probably cannot be achieved by any method because the A, the two patios were already in place and the shed is a plastic shed which could be moved frankly at any time. Uh and it's small, uh the requested variances of the three variances, um you know, are probably fairly substantial. Um but in this case, uh as previously mentioned, the uh financial burden of changing, moving um would would be uh like a material event. And the will not have an adverse effect uh or impact on the physical environmental conditions in the neighborhood. There are no neighbors who are present who have written in opposition to the uh variances requested. Uh and it um the 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 two existing patios are certainly not a self-created hardship. The the shed is uh certainly probably a self-created hardship, but it's fairly insubstantial. Therefore, I move you grant the variance, Tom, do we need anything for the shed?
The building department already has a current survey.
Okay.
We're good.
So, okay, then we have nothing to start and nothing to finish.
I'll second.
Chairman Giordina.
Hi.
Mike Nolan.
Hi.
Ron Genzeg.
Hi.
Warren Gottlieb.
Hi.
Kathleen Derazans.
Hi.
Thank you.
Have your various, please, when you have.
Uh waters?
Anyone on one?
Yes.
Yeah.
Good evening, uh the site of the site of our consultants are representing Gregory Waters and Monica Fosswitz, uh two ninety-seven Federal Road.
Can I ask you? Is that okay right here on my screen? Please do.
Okay, thank you.
So just to give you the location on the site, uh here's first congregation church. Uh sort of property directly across from it, um Federal Road and um it's the site of a new home that uh that was built in the last year or so. Uh the variance that's being requested is uh from section six sixty-ish four twenty F eight B three which has no driveway entering onto many, which shall have a grade rated in box ten and thirty-five with this feet of center line. And sixty-ish four twenty F eight B four, the maximum municipal grade changing driveway grade shall be six percent. So, um the driveway was constructed by the site contractor, this is the original grade that was approved with the site plan. And overlaying all that in the red dash line is the existing or has built driveway profile. So, uh as you can see with the contractor, the site contractor did not construct it as per the approved plan which is here in the light blue uh below that. And uh at this time is not willing to correct the situation, so for the two variances, uh the first one with five percent within thirty-five feet, so this is the center line of the road, here's thirty-five feet off, here's your property line. Uh so the section that we're talking about that needs a variance is this section right here where um where is in within um five within thirty feet is starting to change to just under twelve percent grade. The second uh variance we're seeking is originally this prograde was supposed to be five percent. It was constructed at four percent. So it's supposed to be five percent to ten point eight percent, which was within the six percent grade change. As constructed, it's four percent in to eleven point nine six percent, which is about eighty percent grade change. So, at this time, we're seeking the variance uh for this, uh for those two sections of the road.
So you you said the contractor is unwilling to correct the uh the uh mistake on the grade. If he was originally contracted to do the job with certain requirements, why is he not doing it the way it's supposed to be done? Why can't you not force the issue and have it done?
Um I can't I can't speak to that, I haven't had a direct dealing with the contractor. Um Andrew, do you wanna chime in on that?
I can speak to that. Uh good evening, my name is Ian Jack Rowell, I'm with uh Home Homes Contractors to build a home for uh Gregory Monica here. Um part of the part of the issue too is the um original design that site design consultants had issued was for the house to be set at a certain elevation in the garage and um the house is actually, the garage elevation was actually uh raised up about seven inches higher than what that um had called for, so that that kind of contributed to the increase in slope, so trying to connect the edge of pavement to the garage slab elevation resulted in some of the increased slopes here. And then the second of which is really just that the uh it would be a substantial amount of earthwork to try and uh move this um move the grading around to try and achieve these grades here. And so um it would create a good amount of disturbance as well as just um earthwork in close proximity to uh you know, to state roads, and so uh it would be preferred to leave in the the existing condition as had been constructed um you know, due to those two reasons there.
What's the impact of the uh site drainage because of this?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Oh, um so what have what is the impact of the drainage for the site because of this change from what was originally designed?
Um no, we're we're still collecting the same amount of uh runoff and being piped to a self-service stormwater man, the system that's been completed and added to the plan.
So you're saying that this the drainage conditions are not going to be negatively negatively affected by having this uh
That is that is correct.
Okay.
And and although not although not um significant the original grade uh from the um property line needed to thirty-five or uh point was five percent. It's now four percent and it's not a significant change in grade, but it is it does make it a little, it does compensate a little bit for um the lack of distance.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, um yeah, can you can you tell us, why is the garage seven inches higher than planned?
Um I believe that there was um it was an issue with the the installation overall, I think the garage slab was um was set seven inches higher to uh reduce the number of steps entering into the residence. And uh that was um something that was not originally contemplated on the design and that was worked out in the field when um that was being installed and that was the reason to reduce one step to enter into the home.
Thank you.
I I just have a question, uh this this it's a practical question. This property has not been inhabited for over forty years. I I remember well, I knew the previous owner before the previous owner. Um and at at that time when the original house was there, which you may or may not remember, it was an old, old, like a cement kind of film house. And I think that when they drove in and out of the property, the traffic on one seventeen is probably profoundly uh less. And my only concern would be, does this create a dangerous situation for the homeowners getting in and out of the driveway? I don't know, you know, I don't, I've never dealt with this particular situation before, but does this make it any less safe to enter and exit that driveway?
Uh, any? So the original driveway location was right here. Closer, uh, closer to the curb.
That's a worse location, right. That's a worse location.
What's that?
That, that would be a, a far worse location than where you have it now.
Correct. We slid the driveway further away from the curb, um, increasing the site distance and stopping, potential stopping distance. So, um, this is a safer location for the driveway than where, where it was previously.
Okay, I just don't know how the grade would impact, um, does it mean that a car is gonna bounce when it gets in? I, I have no idea, but so, I mean, it looks to me like a pretty small percentage, but I don't know how to make that judgment. Tom, is it like a town engineer looked at this at all? I mean, is that who determined this?
The town engineer determined the difference in what was permitted and what is existing, yes.
Did he have any comments as to safety or usability or anything like that?
The line of sight was evaluated by the Department of Transportation. It's a state road and found to be acceptable.
Yeah, the line of sight, I think, is far better than it was.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. And, and our engineering department has no, uh, hopes?
No, no objection.
No serious, uh, negative comments about the, uh, about the, uh, requested variance?
The town engineer is the one that evaluated the driveway and, and sent us the memo to say this is the variance requested and had no other concerns.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Ready?
Yes.
Very good. Okay, I'll move. Anybody in the audience? No. Address this application since it's empty. Anybody online that would like to address this application?
No hands are raised.
No hands are raised. Okay, I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
I second the motion.
Chairman Giordina.
Aye.
Mike Nolan.
Aye.
Ron Genzeg.
Aye.
Warren Gottlieb.
Aye.
Kathleen Darazan.
Aye.
All right, I'll make a motion at the application of, uh, Walter Gregory and Monica Pro- Prosovich, um, for driveway grade change variances, um, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna specify this now. Six, well, here's a six point, six point nine six percent variance for three point four feet of the driveway. And, uh, grade change, uh, is, rather than the six percent that's allowed, uh, they're looking for a seven point nine percent grade change, um, for driveway constructed with newly constructed house. Um, and I'll make a motion that we approve these variances for the following reasons. The, the, um, when the new house was built, the, uh, homeowner in conjunction with the contractor, uh, tried, uh, tried to eliminate or step into the house to make it easier access. And by doing that, they had to raise the, uh, the garage floor by seven inches. Uh, this created the, uh, the problem with maintaining the grade changes that, uh, that are allowed by the code. Um, even though they did not adhere to the grade changes, there's the small variances of change that they did make on the property are de minimis. Uh, there's, they will not negatively, negatively affect the ingress regress from the property on the driveway. Uh, the site distances are acceptable to the New York, the New York State Department of Transportation. Um, our engineering department reviewed this, uh, application and, uh, notified us of the, uh, the deficiencies, but did not, uh, comment on whether or not it should be changed. So we're assuming that they're not too troubled by it. Um, the drainage from the property will not be negatively affected by the grade change. Uh, the, the, uh, stormwater management system, uh, that's in place will handle it, uh, whether or not that change was in place. Um, the, uh, granting of the variance will not create an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood. Um, uh, for the, uh, and even though this was a self-created hardship, um, the app, the, the benefit to the applicant of, um, having this variance granted uh, will outweigh the negative effect of this minimal percentage change that they're, uh, asking for. Um, we don't need any surveys, they're all been done, we don't need any other information. Uh, so for those reasons, I will move that we grant the application.
And I second the motion.
Chairman Giordina.
Aye.
Mike Nolan.
Aye.
Ron Genzeg.
Aye.
Warren Gottlieb.
Aye.
Kathleen Darazan.
Aye.
Okay, you have your various. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right, we have approval of the minutes from the September twenty-fourth, uh, meeting. Uh, we make a motion that we approve the minutes as corrected.
I second the motion.
Chairman Giordina.
Aye.
Mike Nolan.
Aye.
Ron Genzeg.
Aye.
Warren Gottlieb.
Aye.
Kathleen Darazan.
Aye.
The chairman is in order. I move your term. We're done, we're off.